I call this meeting to order. Today is Friday, January 23rd. It's 10 o'clock for an emergency meeting. I will do a call of order. Mr. Eldon Callen?
Yep.
Mr. Ed Hawkins?
Here.
Okay, the one issue before us at this time. Oh, I apologize, yes. If we all stand, rise for a moment of meditation and then a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As this meeting was called as an emergency meeting, is there any clarification at this time?
I'd like to make a motion that we only have 48 hours notice on this meeting. However, we got an emergencies. We've got what we consider a emergency situation in the fact that many people have recyclables stacked up in their homes and some in their cars and in areas that we thought behooved this commission to, now that Solid Waste Authority has removed, has stopped their recycling program, that the county commission looks at participating in the recycling program and therefore I'd move we suspend the rules and accept the 40 hour notice instead of waiting until 3 o'clock this afternoon to start the meeting.
Is there a sec? Okay, so it's been properly moved in second to suspend the rules to make it to a 40 hour meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? No. I mean, it passes three out, so. Delay reaction. Now, because it's a regular meeting and we were about to go into discuss one issue, however, something has immediately come up and I'm going to request that we have to go into executive session, nothing to do with recycling, but pursuant to 6-9A-4B due to legal matters. And that is what I'm requesting to-
I would make that motion, or I, excuse me, you're not supposed to say that. I would move to go into executive session under those provisions.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. This will not take more than five or 10 minutes, but we have to do this. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? No. If, we will move into executive session, we will shut the doors, we will ask the public, all of you, if you could understand the situation and if you go out to the outside for about five or 10 minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'm, I move that we come out of executive session.
Second. It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, it passes. We appreciate the indulgence of you all for going out there, but it was an emergency situation and it's looking better. So, we appreciate your understanding. At this time, we only have one issue on and it was basically generally recycling and the solid waste situation and how does somebody want to perceive.
I, I would like Commissioner Hawkins to give us a report of what he knows.
Sure.
We, actually Tom also attended the meeting. You requested a list. This is the list of materials that are owned by the various entities. The meeting went very well. This also is their public statement that they presented to everybody who was in attendance at the meeting.
Yeah.
It was a good meeting. Everybody who was in attendance got to speak and ask questions if they desired. The meeting was well spoken. I'd like to emphasize that. Those who were speaking on the Solid Waste Authority Board spoke well of commission, spoke well of the community. This was not a, there was no animosity and I'd like to reiterate that. At the end of the meeting, they did then vote. There was four, three to one vote to suspend recycling in Monongate County. So now we are faced with the issue of what should we do for Monongate County.
Do you have, did any suggestions come out of that meeting?
Uh, there was one suggestion made privately to me that if the county commission had the manpower to go ahead and do this with county workers, that there would be willingness to use their trucks and their bins that's under their ownership to do so.
While we were also there, I'm sorry.
But there was great, there was great community concern, let's put it that way. The, the community, everyone who spoke on behalf of the community expressed and every email that obviously we've all gotten shared has a vested interest. The, the key element here is can you get 20% compliance that you have right now on a voluntary basis up to an 80% compliance, in which case it would be a profitable entity for the Solid Waste Authority to possibly still continue.
What, if I may, what gravely concerns about these emails and these comments is that they're full of fallacies. They are false. Monongate County Commission does not operate recycling program. Solid Waste Authority is an arm of the state. It is not an arm of the county. We have no more control over Solid Waste Authority and the things that they do than we have over Monongate County General Hospital. We can't go in there and order them to do this operation or that operation or charge this. That Solid Waste Authority is an arm of the state. We have no more control over the Solid Waste Authority than we do over WVU. It's a fallacy. And what killed me about these stupid emails, it's just typical of the hostile environment where people make accusations and personal attacks, having no idea, totally ignorant to the real circumstances. And if they're really interested in recycling, they'd learn what the program is here in this state. If they, was all the ones from WVU. WVU is more responsible for the failure of the Solid Waste Authority recycling program than anyone else. Where's their emails going after the Board of Governors or President Guy? That's who they need to go after. I mean, this, this fallacy of the Monongate County Commission is failing and how did you not know this was going? We have nothing to do or say over the Solid Waste Authority. We, we tried to help as we try to help all entities, but when it came down to it, it was a state agency and we, anything that we did or tried to do properly had to involve their consent. So anyone that says any difference is ignorant of the fact, the facts and the makeup of, of the Solid Waste Authority. And that, and I want to follow that up with the fact that we have, we have a commitment on this commission to try to support recycling. And we've always, we all said that. That is why we're having this meeting, to see if the county commission wants to try to step in and do something with restoring the recycling program. We have no requirement to do so. The same as the Solid Waste Authority. And I appreciate the, our members on the Solid Waste Authority being here. Thank you very much. Cause you are, are the experts. You're the one that really studied this, this all day. And we're glad that you're here. Jim, he's an expert. He's done, been involved with this for years. So we got some expertise in here. But we certainly have no business, no business saying that the Solid Waste Authority's primary function is recycling because that's not true. The board members know that, that they don't have to do recycling. That is not a statutory requirement from their state function. They did, did, and they did a good job, but businesses change and that's what, that's what's happened. So I just wanted to set the record straight that these people, especially the ones from WVU, take your email and send it to President Guy because President Guy and his people up there at WVU is more responsible for the failure of the Solid Waste Authority than, than we are. Okay.
Thank you. A couple of things. Mr. Hawkins is correct and, and I, and I think both of us were really pleased and I want to say this on the record to Mr. Custer, Hayward Helmick and Bob McConnell. They were extremely professional, very concerned that they want the recycling to continue. They were very concerned that it was at a situation that they had no other option at this time. And as Mr. Hawkins said, it was temporarily halted. And that is why it is allowed now, after talking to the state, that we could now consider some options from the county commission. And again, that would be for us to come in and try and work out some sort of a temporary and a long-term solution. And that's what I believe the public needs to understand. It's a two-pronged situation. The first is a temporary. How can we try and continue the recycling till the end of the fiscal year? And that's what I think our goal would be.
Yes, yes.
Then from there, during this time, come up with a plan, whether it's, and one of the suggestions is a regional type of program. That is something we're going to look at. We're going to look at a number of different options. One other item that did happen, and it was actually accidental, while both Mr. Hawkins and I were there, as we were walking into the meeting, there were two representatives from the Marion County Solid Waste Authority. And in fact, one of them was a former student of mine and he wanted to make it clear, I know Mr. Callen had asked the question, if we were to come up with funds, could they, would they consider-
Process arbitrary.
Yeah. Would they possibly consider running the entire county? And they were very adamant, saying they were concerned about dealing first with the western end, see what happens, but they felt that they were not interested at this time and they wanted to get their feet wet on doing the western end. So with that being said, it kind of took out that option too. We have a meeting at 11 o'clock because we don't know what Republic's going to say. I believe the three of us though are interested and I, and I think we need to get it very clear. We did not stop recycling the county commission. And really, I don't want to put the blame on the Solid Waste Authority. There were things that happened between going to, taking the amount of material that suddenly went away from Solid Waste Authority, the drop in the market of solid waste. And the bottom line is that you need a lot of recycling to make money. And since the closest center is really up in Pittsburgh, we didn't have the tonnage, I guess that would be the best way, to continue. And several years ago, when everything was going well and they were the only ones, we had that tonnage. So that is something we need to look at. But we want to make it very clear, we're going to try and see what we can do. I guess the question is, and I'm not sure where we go from here until we hear from Republic of any other suggestions. I, if, with your permission, I don't know if Mr. Custer or Mr. McConnell, if you want to say anything, but I mean, declare up anything that-
I would, I'd like to hear from them.
Okay, it is temporarily and I do want to make sure that we have it on, an agreement because there is something that we did learn, that we would need Mr. Helmick to send a letter to the state that just says that it's temporary and it's okay with you to have Marion County come in temporarily till the end of the fiscal year to deal with the western end. So we would need that letter and then say it till the end of the fiscal year. So as long as we had that, we felt that we covered the western end and the state, Marion County Solid Waste Authority. Someone called me and said, they would be appreciative of that. I talked to Diane and she's going to amend the MOU, memo of understanding to add that in, but we would need a letter just so everyone is on the same path. So if either the two of you-
If I may just add one thing because you, you covered it very well and that was an excellent presentation on, on the situation where we're at. That, that, that reemphasizes the fact that we can't do anything, this commission can't do anything with recycling without the approval of the Solid Waste Authority. So, so this foolish, you know, just foolishness, these, these people that do not understand the basic structure. The county is the county. Just because it says Mon, Monongate County Solid Waste Authority doesn't mean it's an arm of the county. It's an arm of the state. So, so I'm glad you pointed out that before we could even bring in Marion County, we've got to have your all's approval. Before we can do anything, we've got to have the Solid Waste Authority's approval. That just goes to show the level that Solid Waste Authority is and the level that we are.
Right. And that the state has to even approve-
For us to do that.
For us to do that. So we believe we can get it done and there's no problem, but we want to make sure everything's correct so no one can then come back to us and say we've done something incorrectly. So did either of you want to, I mean, if you wanted to speak, that's fine. If not, that it's really up to you.
Make them speak, Tom. I want to hear.
They want to hear, they want to hear from you. Who would like to speak?
I have nothing else to add. We've, we've discussed this a lot and the information's out there, so I have nothing to add to this.
I believe everything has been said here.
Okay, it's factual.
And in terms of a letter coming from the Solid Waste Authority, we have not formally discussed it, but privately we've talked about things like this and I'm quite sure there'd be no problem getting that letter.
And it's just documentation of the meeting of what you did. And I believe they wanted to clarify the word temporarily as till the end of the fiscal year. So that way Marion County, if they're going to invest some money, at least knows it's till that period and then we can decide from there. You, but we do also want to make it clear, you would be interested, since we have to ask you, the possibility, we want it on the record, of possibly looking at a regional recycling program with several other counties. What that entity is, we don't know yet. But is that something that we could consider as one of our options? And again, you can only speak as an individual, I understand.
I believe that would not be a problem because as a matter of fact, we actually proposed that among other, the other counties a few years ago. So I don't think there would be any problem with that either.
Good.
I don't think there'd be a problem either, but that would be one of several other options we need to look at. That's not the primary one, but that would be one of several other options.
This, this would give us time to assess, evaluate and see what we can do best for the citizens of Monongate County.
Yes, I'd say this temporary period, it was time to look into all of the options.
And there is one silver lining. And trying to be a teacher, I try and look at the positive in this and there really is. Because we've taken for granted recycling and one of the things we need to do is to promote it, actually, we're probably going to go through a tentative period, maybe seven days or more, hopefully if we can resolve something, of not having recycling. We have brought that to the attention of the public. And I believe it's really important now that they may not have it for seven days, realize what it really can do for this community. So in that sense, I believe there is a positive outline, you know, situation. And I believe people, one of the things they kept saying was, well, we need to promote more, we need to do some work. And, and we're in agreement. I also think that if it lowers the amount of tonnage that we put in the dumps, you know, and the waste facilities, landfills, then it is a positive. So there is some positive things that are going to come out of it. I ask the public to please understand that we're trying to, to work this out and we have to follow the state law. And just because we say we're going to do something, we have to get Marion County solid waste, we got to get Mon County solid waste and then the state to agree with whatever, whatever plan it may be. I, I, you know, and, and Republic right now, whether right or wrong, is the only entity that's doing it in the county right now. So we want to see what they're doing. The other good thing would be is tentatively, if we use Republic and what they have told us in our meeting with Jamie, and it was real quick, was just discussion on the phone was, they would want to go to single stream. Why that is positive is because many people are concerned about the glass. And Westover's doing a great job. Single stream, they're collecting more materials. They are talking about the possibility of 17 different items put in one air. Whether you like single stream or not, at least the key being that this county commission does not want people to go out and throw it over the hillside, does not want to put it in the garbage if we can come up with an alternative. And that's really where we're all now. We have one of two options. We could, and I don't know if I want to do that, if we want to just ask that we recess the meeting until we hear from them and make a decision, because if we close the meeting and then we decide, then we have to wait 48 more hours.
Could I, could I ask a couple of questions?
Go right ahead.
And I think that's eventually what we're going to do, what I think is probably a good idea to do, is to recess the meeting. Cause we have never, and this is important distinction, jurisdictional issue distinction. We have never, although we've all said we were in support of recycling, we have never had a formal motion saying that the county commission will be involved in the recycling program.
Right.
We need to have that motion because our, our, it's not one of the duties under, under chapter seven. It's not one of our duties. Solid Waste Authority's duty, but it's not one of our county duties. So if we're going to go into this venture, we need to have a formal motion at some point
Okay.
to, to officially involve the county commission in recycling. Because legally, we're not involved in recycling period at this juncture. What I wanted to, to know, I, I found this as a temporary stopgap, is if either one of you gentlemen would have an idea as to what the cost would be, say for, or monthly cost for the next six months, rest of the fiscal year. If we, as a county, staffed the pickup and the pickup and the drop off. And I'm, I'm just curi, I'm just curious if, if we, about how much it would cost, number one. And, and number two, I, I would like, I would like to see it to go to, to build, and I want your opinion on this, to build our relationship with Marion County and, and the regional concept. If we, if we picked up, picked up from here and delivered to Marion County, how much would that cost? Do you have any idea? I would say a monthly fee.
Okay, I can answer that in two, in a couple of different ways. Let me stand up here.
Sure.
Do you stand and come up here and sit down?
And this is Bob McConnell, just so people know and for the record.
That's, that's a fairly complicated question, but I can give you some ideas as to what, what might happen. For instance, if we were running roughly eight drop off sites around the county. I'm not, don't, don't quote me on that number, but around that number. We had two drivers and it became very clear in this bad weather, two drivers could not keep up. So it's obvious it would take at least three drivers and that's three time, three full-time people.
Okay, that's-
So you get an idea of what that's going to cost. Now, now you've got to talk about the cost of running vehicles. Now, the numbers we've been using, which do include depreciation, run roughly $2.50 a mile per truck. Now that includes fuel, insurance, a lot of stuff.
Total cost.
Okay.
And I don't, and, and don't, I can't be sure, but I don't believe it counts the driver's time. Okay, now if we're going to, if we're going to Marion County, I do not know how far it is from here to that facility. Does anybody know? You can kind of guess what it's going to be.
Jim, do you have any idea?
It's going to be 25 miles.
I think it's over towards the western end though. That's, so it's even farther.
The, the western end of the county is closer.
Right.
Okay. So you're talking about, let's say, let's just guess 25 miles.
Okay.
One way. That's a 50 mile round trip. To haul that material to Marion County, you're talking-
Another cost.
25 miles or two. Now $62.50 if my math is correct. If I didn't do the, if I got, if I got the decimal point in the right place.
That's another fifth, 40 thousand.
Now the material that you're hauling depends on the material. Now, for instance, if you're hauling newspaper, very dense material, you're hauling a ton of newspaper at one time, but it's only worth about, right at the market price right now, about $35. Now in the past, it's been worth about a hundred. So somehow or other, in the last year, that market has really fallen for the newspaper. On the other hand, if you're hauling cardboard, you can only haul up probably a thousand pounds or maybe, or maybe a little left. That's a half a ton. And it's worth about a hundred dollars. So this is what you're talking about. The distance you're traveling is what kills everything. Having to haul things. Now, now let me answer the question in a different way. Suppose we would set up a site very close to the transfer station, say within a mile. And say we haul the material directly to the transfer station instead of to Marion County. Now you're only, now it's only going to cost you $10 or so to make that trip. But the problem with that is even then, the amount of money you can get from a ton of material at the transfer station, only $6 or $7 or something like that. It's getting really close to covering it then. But if you're having to haul it from Pierfont or Sam's Club or something like that, you're still driving 10 miles round trip.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it becomes, becomes a very expensive prospect. Of course, when you set a mile from, a mile from the transfer station, I mean, we thought of our mayor, Dave Johnson, that's Westover.
We can drop it off there. At the city, how about the city offices?
Can I say something about that?
Yeah, please, go right ahead.
You know, I, I'm regret, regretfully, I couldn't stay for the entire meeting. I had a couple of other things I wanted to talk about. But a little bit I did gather from the meeting, what a little time I spent there, it seems to me that the constraints that are on the Solid Waste Authority aren't the same that's on Republic.
Right.
Because that's why we take ours to, we take them because it's, it's so easy for us to do. We've got bins that people, we just dump it in a truck. It's a simple process. Prior to that, we had to separate everything because they had to have it separated. You know, I'm always the one that tries to blow the horn on the legislation, but you know what? That's a state problem.
Yeah.
Cause the restraints that they have on that right now seem to me to be a state problem because they're responsible, the state's responsible for the Solid Waste Authority.
Yeah.
Now, as far as, you know, when, when we cleaned our site up there two weeks ago, we just put it in our recycling truck and took it straight to Republic and got rid of the cardboard. Basically what it all was. And then we blocked it off, of course. Now the meetings that you're going to have at 11 o'clock or the phone call or whatever you're going to have, are they going to continue to accept this?
Honestly, we, and that's going to be our question. We don't know, I have no idea what they're going to say. I, I believe, I'm hoping they will come up with a proposal for us to get it given up.
Well, they, they make money off of this.
Oh, yeah.
And if we do take it tomorrow to, to Marion County, I'm assuming Marion County's staying afloat because they're making money.
Exactly. That's exactly right. That's why they want the ball.
I know that if it's only $6 a ton, maybe the county can recover $2 a ton to help offset the charges that it's going to, if you guys are paying to get into that.
And that's what we would, we'd be discussing.
It sounds to me that maybe around as much as 60, a hundred thousand dollars a month to operate there.
A month?
For, for the next six months, I'm sorry.
Which, okay, which?
The, the, the cheapest one to, to, to drop it off, to put it within one mile and drop it off at-
I just used throughout that one mile as an example.
Okay, all right.
But-
I'm just trying to do the math quickly. My head for, for what it costs us to do for the next six months.
You know, if we set it up very close, we might get by with say two drivers because it doesn't take very long to handle that kind of stuff.
How many trucks do you have?
Well, between us, we have three trucks. But we always have to, you know, there's mainness problems, you know, if a truck breaks down.
Yeah, in fact, one is, was broken down. I think they did fix it, yeah.
It's either fixed very recently or still, it's still being fixed.
There, there was a question that was asked at the meeting, you weren't there. What would it cost? And this way, they asked Hayward, if wishlist, if they, if, if SWA wanted to finish the last six months. And he was very honest and said, starting from scratch, you have new drivers, training and so on. He said it was between 200, $150,000 and $250,000 just to get it completed till the end. And that, and that, and he was-
For six months?
For six months. Now that's what he said. And, and what I'm looking here, what you just said and figuring it out because of the drive and so on, the, the problem is we had two drivers in the last four weeks and they were, and I want, and I want it real clear. I do not blame them at all. They were running and running and doing everything they could. They couldn't keep up with the demand. And that's where, and that's an exciting, good news because it means that people wanted to recycle. However, we need to come up with a program that we can manage it. So that's why he said 150 to 200. And that's if everything works out fine. Yes.
One more quick question.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm assuming that everything's going to be contingent upon what Republic is willing to accept. Is that correct?
And us, and we're willing to accept.
Initially, when they came, initially when they came in here, they said they, they would do it. They'd do single stream. It wouldn't cost the county anything. We wouldn't get anything. We wouldn't get anything, but wouldn't cost the county anything. That was, that was the key thing. Now, there's a, 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 a word has come back, say, oh, we misspoke, the county's gonna have to pay some money. Well, I have a problem with the taxpayers', uh, dollars being paid to Republic who is taking this stuff to make a profit off of. It, it, that's one thing that creates a problem, but I might, but I might, but I might get over that. The other thing that's a little bit more difficult, because I know that I'm gonna hear from forty thousand people for, in the neighborhood of forty thousand people in Morgantown and, uh, Westover and Star City too, that are already paying to have their recycling, and yet they're double paying. They're, they're paying their fee to get their recycling picked up, then by us using taxpayer money to pay Republic for outside the county, those people in those areas are double paying for recycling because that's part of their tax dollars that's being used to pay for.
If they're in fact paying, but we don't, we don't get anything for it. We don't, we don't pay anything. We take it there and dump it. I have selfish.
I live in Morgantown, I pay. It's on my bill.
Well, I have selfish reasons for being at this meeting other than the obvious, because I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna jeopardize the program that we have
Right.
going on in Westover. Now, because we have, we're under a DED grant, as long as we're able to take our stuff to Republic or Solid Waste, wherever we may be, then we're cool. Everything's fine. Only thing, our dime is our labor for our, for our, uh, for our driver. That's the only, that's the only dime we spend on it.
Is that gonna kick in? Uh, when the grant ends, will, will people have to start paying?
No, no, absolutely.
Not as long as you have the grant.
As long as it stays like it is. And in fact, we would be, even be willing to, if we had a truck to provide a driver to do the, uh, the, the site that we have at Westover.
Use that site.
But we don't wanna do that if that's gonna be the only site that's gonna be in the county because of course, I can always drive. I need, I need to work my community service.
And that's our, oh, man.
That's a, that's a good idea.
Well, you are, you know, like I said, you know, I, I, I'm here two-fold. I'm, I'm here to help with foster care, but at the same time, like I said, I have selfish reasons as well. We don't wanna lose our program because, you know, I would like to officially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Jamie, did you wanna say something?
As I can speak for Star City.
Put your Star City hat on.
I put my Star City hat on. Uh, we will not charge our, uh, single stream either. Uh, right now, we're gonna be using clear bags, and, uh, once we do that, uh, and we'll pick up every third day and drive it straight to the transfer station.
So the, the, the city itself is doing the recycling.
Yes, we're gonna do ourselves.
Unlike the Morgantown, which
They contract it out.
I understand, I understand they're paying, they're paying it, and then I know I pay on my bill.
Right.
Because that's Republic.
Right.
Decision on doing it. We're able to do a grant, which I'm sure if these guys would move in that direction, they could probably, because we have a truck and everything. I mean, we, we got a truck that was provided through the grant, has to be solely used for recycling for five years, and after five years, we do what we want.
Now, WDU, are they doing, are they doing, uh, the, is it, is it like Morgantown or is it like you?
Star.
No, I don't, I agree.
I think, I think they have their stuff in bins and they just put it all together and it's all single stream for them.
Right.
Don't I say that right, Bob?
They, they carry, they haul it. They carry their own material.
They carry their own material to the transfer station. They dump it, they get carried.
Okay.
But it's, it's, it's on these guys is what's hurting them. Because they have, they have to physically separate the stuff. We had to do it when we took it there. If those restraints were lifted, then they would have the bulk if they could get WDU back. I know what we do, probably wouldn't get them out of the black or out of the red, but, uh,
But it helps.
But it would help, and, and we'd be more willing to do that. Like I said, the only reason we do what we're doing now is because it's just so much simpler for us.
Well, the state has some restrictions, it, it's really not right, uh, because, that, like you said.
Yeah, why don't you make me receive it?
Public Service Commission, Public Service Commission sits there and, and makes things easy on these businesses. Meanwhile, our government entities, uh, the state entity like the Solid Waste Authority has their hands tied that they can't do things to, to even compete with, with, with the, the Public Service Commission people.
Their regulatory, you know, that's, wow, money, but I'm not allowed to talk like that. Public Services Commission, they don't get along.
I, I, oh, go ahead, Dave. Feel free.
Like I said, there's a lot of, a lot of options out there that look at Republic Services as just one option.
Right.
You know, there's other ways we can look about cutting costs some way other than going through Republic Services just for recycling.
Right. What, what, what are some of those ways?
Well, I think I brought those up at your meeting at one time, uh, where we can go directly to the marketer themselves. We don't have that middle person to get our, they need money back during our recycling.
But my question is still there, I think I had it at the time. How much would that cost to get it instituted? I mean, we gotta figure out what the upfront cost is and then the ongoing cost.
Yes, we would have to sit down and figure that out. Because now, since we don't have those other entities playing, playing with us on the recycling program, we have to reevaluate what our cost would be.
Well, I, if the, the commissioners, um, would agree, I think what you said earlier, Tom, is correct. Any sort of agreement we reach should probably not extend beyond this fiscal year.
Correct.
And then, uh, and then explore more fully the long-term solutions which may include those things. Of course, we have to explore them with the Solid Waste Authority because they're the ones that have the authority to, to act. Uh, and, and I, we would like to do that. Is that acceptable to you all? You, I know you can only speak for yourself because you're not, the whole board isn't here, but would it, would, would you, would that meet your, uh, temporary suspension, uh, of this thing is that we try to work on the longer term thing?
I think temporarily, we're, we're all in support of that. We don't want the program to stop. We don't want recycling to stop. It needs to be done. You've noticed it in the last week or two, how important it is, not just to you guys, but also for the citizens of Mon- Mon County. So we, and as Solid Waste Authority board members, we want a program in place at all times. Yes, temporarily, that's great. Let's work on trying to get something done. In the meantime, let's look at the longer solution.
What, 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 you know, after hearing this, um, there, there was one other thing, and I did wanna say, um, Anthony G. Murney has been in the middle of this, and as I thanked everyone else, I, I, I was remiss. I do wanna thank him because he's been in the middle and contacting everyone and had the contacts, so I do wanna thank you for getting, getting in the middle of this crap, basically, what, what it was. Um, you, but Mr. Callen brings up a really good point. I'd like to accomplish something before re- recess to talk. He, you, you are correct. As of right now, officially, we have never stated that we are in the, and I don't wanna like to say recycling business. What I'd like to have would be a motion that would affirm that due to the situation that is now upon us, we need to get involved for the next six months, something along that lines. That would then affirm, then we could recess, talk with Republic, then come back in, because then that at least gives us the authority, and you're right. If we were moved, someone could say, you jumped in and you didn't have the authority. So that way, because of the situation and due to the, the needs of the public, we could do that. So if you wanna come up with something in that terminology.
Due, due to the current situation, which Solid Waste Authority had to temporarily suspend their recycling program, and due to the public interest, uh, and the public need for the environment and, uh, in Monague County, and due to this commission's body's commitment to try to help in any way to, uh, alleviate this situation, uh, I would move that this commission, uh, officially, uh, work to, uh, come up with a temporary solution, working with the Solid Waste Authority on the recycling needs of Monague County, while at the same time, uh, uh, working on a long-term solution which may or may not include the Monague County Commission. That will be negotiated at a later, later date. Uh, this motion would, uh, terminate that authorization at the end of six months.
I will happily second that.
And I'm not gonna repeat it because I, Janet has it down, and that's the importance. I'll tell, I think, yeah, I think it's a wonderful idea. We have a, uh, properly moved motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes. Do I have a motion to move the meeting to recess till we, we then discuss with Republic, and then we could reopen the meeting?
Move to recess for those purposes.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second to recess till after discussion with Republic. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. We're in recess until we have a discussion, which is hopefully in a minute or so when he shows up. Thank you. I have a, could I have a motion to go back into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. We're in regular session. How do you wanna go from here?
Well, we, I got a list of four motions.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Hawkins doesn't mind, I'll just do all four of them.
Fine.
Okay.
You haven't written that.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Uh, the, the first one, we wanna authorize our Director of Programs and Services, Anthony G. Murney, to work with the Solid Waste Authority, uh, to get permission from the, uh, sites, the four sites, it, is it? The, the four sites that exist currently, uh, given the fact that we're looking to change the pickup method and size of trucks. So we wanna authorize him to work with the Solid Waste Authority to get the proper permissions to continue those sites. In fact, through February one.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It passes. Second motion.
Uh, second motion, uh, has to do, we're gonna enter an agreement with Republic, uh, to, uh, pick up the, pick up the, uh, to operate these, these four sites. Uh, we will get, we will get the necessary, uh, uh, permissions, if any, uh, from the Solid Waste Authority. Uh, but we're gonna to enter an agreement with Republic to operate these sites, so pick up two times a week. Uh, then we use their own bins. Uh, we will, we will, uh, pay them eighteen hundred seventy-five dollars initially, uh, per month until they see that the need, that amount may, may increase if the need is such. This will be for residential recycling only. It will be confined to those, those, uh, materials that the Solid Waste Authority was picking up previously. Uh, and this agreement will last the rest of this fiscal year to June thirtieth. The expected start date is February first of this year.
Second that motion.
Okay, there's been a, uh, motion and a second, and again, I wanna reiterate, it is for residential use only, and that is very, very important if we wanna continue this program. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Thank you. That's the second one. Third one?
Uh, the third one is, uh, the operation of the Westover site. Uh, we're gonna authorize and allow Westover to continue to operate their site in Westover for recycling. We're gonna allow them to use one of, uh, the, the county-owned hook trucks that the Solid Waste Authority had been using previously. We will also, they're going to provide the driver, Westover is, uh, we will also, also pay for fuel, uh, which will be reimbursed to the city of Westover on the proper submission of an invoice.
Commending the city of Westover on the spirit of cooperation. I second that.
And that's an excellent point, Mr. Hawkins. I think that's, partnership is what we're looking at. I think that's a great idea. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
All those opposed? Passes. Go.
Okay, the fourth one, uh, we need to, we need to make sure the sites are in proper order. Uh, they are on private property, uh, so, uh, we need to authorize the use of county employees. Uh, we, we authorize our Director of Programs Services, J- Anthony G. Murney, to use the litter control, his litter control crew to, uh, go to the Solid Waste Authority sites, ensure that, that they're clean and ready for, uh, Republic to install, install their bins. And since it's on private property, it, it requires a separate authorization for us to use, uh, private or, or public employees.
Well, no, I might have explained that wrong. I'm sorry. I, what I wanted to use them for was
On Monday.
once we engaged with Republic, if there was overflow, to have our guys go clean those up. Because the Solid Waste has already cleaned those sites up. They're ready. I, what I meant.
Okay, I misunderstood.
The bins are.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, I, I withdraw that motion.
Okay.
I'll start.
We wanna clarify the motion. Let's try again. That's alright, I appreciate that. So we, we wanna make sure everyone knows what's going on. Go ahead.
Right. Uh, I, I, I appreciate that, because that needed to be done too. I hadn't thought about that, but that, that needed to be done too. Alright. Fourth motion. I move that we authorize our Director of Programs Services, Anthony G. Murney, to use his litter control crew to, uh, police these, uh, sites, uh, formerly Solid Waste, uh, Authority sites that exist on private property. Uh, this authorization is necessary to use public employees on private property and on these, uh, uh, on these, uh, recycling sites.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. One clarification that we need to get to the public. As Mr. Callen and Mr. Hawkins have reiterated, this begins February first. That is actually seven days from now. I believe all, I can speak for the two of them, that all three of us are requesting the public to support what we're going to do by not, there will not, okay, because the bins will be taken away, the ones that we currently have. There will not be any place for one week. We are asking the people to wait one week until we get this set up. February first, and please, then by then, we could have a very successful recycling program. So for seven days, we won't have any recycling. Hopefully, people understand the importance of it. And then on February first, because, and again, I wanna publicly thank Republic who has come in and discounted their prices. They understand there's a concern and a problem, and they are working with us. And again, I wanna thank them personally for them. Um, usually when you talk garbage, people always complain. We wanna thank you for helping us with the recycling situation. Did anyone wanna add to that?
I, I just wanted to also thank the, our, our board members, Mr. Custer and, uh,
Yes.
McConnell.
McConnell. I'm sorry. Uh, I knew it was Bob, but I wanted to recognize Mr. McConnell, uh, from the Solid Waste Authority. Uh, their cooperation and, uh, they, as stated previously, uh, we, we, we need them to, to do any of this, and we need the state approval, and, and
Right.
that we also thank Republic and the Solid Waste Authority for their commitment, uh, to work with us over the next six months to come up with a, a permanent solution.
And have we covered all bases? Sure.
Insurance on the truck that's gonna be used, is that still gonna be continued by the Solid Waste Authority? Auto coverage on the truck that's being used? Auto coverage on the truck that's being used for Westover that's still insured by the Solid Waste Authority?
Uh, it will be until it's turned over to the county.
Well, I'm sure it's got insurance covered on it.
Okay. Okay, so we need to make sure that it's insured. Uh, could you tell us a couple days before you then turn it over so we can have it?
We, we will also have to transfer the type.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to go under our coverage.
Right.
We don't want it to keep that way.
Okay, that's question one.
And the second, are you going to make a motion to engage Marion County Solid Waste Authority for the three sites?
Oh.
Well, I thought we had to wait till they had their meeting.
Yeah.
Did they have their meeting?
Okay, um.
Okay, they requested we hold off. Yeah, they requested us hold off, so if we could put that on the agenda, but we, and that's a good point. Just explain to the western end that Marion County Solid Waste Authority is gonna continue the way the Solid Waste Authority was working in the western end, so we will also have that, so we will have two separate programs, okay?
February first would be a good time to go.
February first also, we would ask that they would engage.
I, I'm gonna attend their, uh, their board meeting on Monday night.
Okay.
So maybe by, then maybe Tuesday or Wednesday for, to have our meeting on.
Information.
Yeah, and, and we also need to thank the Solid Waste Authority with their cooperation on that program as well. Uh, Bob, if you could carry that back, I mean, uh, by, by allowing them to come and to reinstall those bins and to work with them. The spirit of cooperation i- is very high now. I know we've had a period of, of, uh, uh, of difficulty for any number of reasons, but that's all history. We are now very positive. This commission is very positive. And we wanna work closely with the Solid Waste Authority. We wanna respect your position and what you do for the county. So, so thank you for that, and thank you for your willingness to work with Marion County.
If, seeing nothing else, I ask for a move for German.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Thank you. We have recycling. Opposed? No. Thank you. We have recycling.